Hey guys, Tucker here, co-host of the Portland Real Estate Podcast. Before we get into this week's show, I wanted to let you know that we're currently looking for more projects. So for any of you guys that listen to the show, that may be an agent or otherwise, that have a property that you're looking to sell, we'd love to hear from you. Obviously, we're looking to purchase properties that are maybe not best suited for the retail market, or maybe they need to be redeveloped. So we do renovations and we do new construction. So we could buy an existing home that maybe it smells like cigarette smoke, maybe it hasn't been updated in decades, maybe it's got some functional issues, problems like that, or maybe it's just in an area that is best suited to take the house down, partition the lot, maybe build a couple of new homes, or just build one new home in its place, and anything in between. So if you guys out there in listening land have anything that would be best suited selling to a development company like ours, we'd love to hear from you. You can go to our website, which is ttmdevelopmentcompany.com. And when you go there, there's a contact us tab. Click on that and you can send us a message and we'll get back to you shortly thereafter. We'd love to hear from any of you guys out there that have a property like this and hopefully we can do a deal together. This is the Portland Real Estate Podcast, your number one place for anything you need to know about the Portland real estate market, along with in-depth interviews from our local real estate industry experts. Now, without further ado, here are our hosts, Tucker Marahue from TTM Development Company and Steve Nasar from Premier Property Group. All right, everybody out there in listening land, welcome back. This is episode 107 of the Portland Real Estate Podcast. We have a great show for you this week, not only in terms of our guests, but also it's the last show of a decade. And I've got my co-host, as always, the super realtor himself. What's up, Steveo?
Hey Tucker, glad to be back on. Man, can you believe it's the end of a decade here in about 11 days? And it sounds kind of official when we say last show of the decade, doesn't it?
It definitely does. It definitely does. But, you know, we've had a hell of a year this year, real estate wise, but I gotta say, we got a hell of a show today, too. Thanks to our friend over at the HBA, Mr. Ezra Hammer. We got connected here with a fine gentleman that's willing to join us and have a spirited discussion about some lively issues in the, out there in the news these days that affect all of us. But before we jump into all of that, anything in particular you want to put out there for our listeners?
No, 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 no. Go right into it. Introduce our guest. I'm super excited to chat with him. As you and I, I kinda overheard you guys as I was getting prepped and set up for the, with my microphone. You and I are both longtime residents of Lake Oswego. Granted, I did move away for about three years. I moved downtown into a really cool condo, but I'm back in Lake Oswego and I've lived here about six, about 13 years now total. I know you've lived here about 15 years, Tucker. So we have somebody that is a part of our community as our guest. Go ahead and introduce them.
Sure. Well, we have John Lamott on the show, not to be confused with John Lamont, as we talked previous to recording. But John is a city councillor for the city of Lake Oswego, and he's got a lot going on beyond that as well. He's got a lot of experience in the city of Lake Oswego on the planning side, and really just dealing with everything that council does and those that are kind of fixtures of the community. So without further ado, welcome to the show, John.
Thank you, guys. Glad to be here.
Yeah, welcome, John.
So for those people that may not be quite as familiar with you, I'll give you a little softball question here. Maybe give us a little background on who you are and then obviously to present day, you know, what it is that you're up to.
Great. I'm a city planner, formerly from Chicago. My wife Jennifer and I moved here eight years ago and had my company in Chicago that we did planning and design for cities, developers, builders, nonprofits, University of Notre Dame, pretty much the whole range of land use and development. And I formed my own company here in the Portland area, or actually the Pacific Northwest called Lamott West. And so again, serve both public and private sector. And then when I first got here, I found out we had an opening on the planning commission. I threw my hat in the ring. I got on the planning commission, eventually became the chair. And then in 2016, I ran for city council. So it's not every day that a city planner runs for city council, but I ran and won, and I've been on for three years now. And it's been an incredible labor of love to serve our community and the region. So glad to be here. We've been involved with everything from A to Z as a city council, from infrastructure and potholes to policy and a lot of input from community. And a lot of these housing issues are really hot. And we were pushing some of them when I first got on the council.
John, I have a quick question. Is that a full-time position or do you have a different side gig, day job?
Well, my company, Lamott West, Planning and Development Advisory Consultancy is my day job. And the city council is, we can't say it's a night job because we do a lot of stuff during the day as well. It's not paid, it's not full-time, but sometimes our hours can get up almost to full-time.
Gotcha. Yeah, okay. That answers my question. Thank you. Hence the labor of love described it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big thing. And it's, man, I tell you what, there, the, when you guys get together and you have your meetings, it can be very spirited as well. So I'm sure there's a lot of time that goes in ahead of time as well to kind of get up to speed on issues, you know, things that are getting brought before you guys. But maybe real quick, just so our listeners can understand kind of the function of council, for those that don't live in Lake Oswego, what is city council meant for? Like, what does it really do? What's its primary functions? And how's it kind of fit into the whole equation there in Lake Oswego?
Well, we are, we are the governing body. So if you can imagine on the corporate side, if you think about a corporation, you have a board of directors. We are the board of directors for the Lake Oswego community. Our mayor is the chair of the board, so to speak. Our city manager is the, you know, chief executive officer. And she's in charge of our department heads. So we function as a policy board, but there's also a lot of day-to-day governance that we have to deal with, not just broad policy, but contracts and hiring and reviews of input from different agencies and grants planning and all kinds of things. It was really amazing when you really get behind the scenes, how much we have to deal with and give guidance. But we give guidance to our city manager and then the city manager as CEO runs the city for us.
Hey, John, I have a high-level question, super high level. So as this governing body, would you say your charter is to make the residents happy? Even if that may contradict future vision that you guys have? Or would you say your charter overrides making the residents happy and what they're asking for? If you see a vision that maybe they don't see?
Fantastic question, really. Because we have to balance that every day. I mean, when people are talking to us, we're on 24/7, 365, and people are buttonholing us or emailing us about an issue. We have to weigh that with what's the best for the city long run. So sometimes they're screaming and yelling, but we have to make a decision to move the ball forward for that future vision to make sure in the long run, our tax base, our job base, our policies, our infrastructure, whatever it is, is, you know, working. Sometimes residents don't see it, it becomes a hot issue. And then also I do this in my city planning profession, too, is you've got to sort through the yelling and screaming because a lot of vocal people can overcome the silent majority. We have to make sure we try and pull information from those that aren't speaking. So if someone's right in our face on an issue, I always gotta say, no, how many more are like this? Is this just one person with one issue or is it deeper? And so we were out there a lot. And surprisingly, we do a lot of sausage making behind the scenes. People don't realize that. Talking with folks, getting with our counselors, trying to develop good direction. So great question, but the big picture and vision is important and we gotta look for the future of the city.
So would you say it's kind of like 50/50 almost? Like you're looking the long, you're looking the long game and beyond what people are saying today, but you obviously have to balance in what they're saying?
Yeah. And again, if there's something really, like there's a couple of times where we're following our plans and then there's an issue that comes up that wasn't anticipated and it's an issue right then and there. It's traffic or access or sewer water and we gotta deal with that. And it may have to be dealt with right there and not necessarily, you know, consider the long range because it might be even an emergency with sewer water or roads or something.
Gotcha. Now, just for further clarification for people listening, and probably for you, Steve, too. So when you're in the building game or the developing game in city like Oswego, you, you basically buy a piece of property, right? And I'm trying to relate this, I guess, to the real estate side of things as much as possible. But for example, you buy a piece of property, you want to do something with it. You get a planning level approval. If you get any sort of pushback from that, from the neighborhood associations or whatnot, you could potentially then have that decision, if it's an approval from planning, taken to the Development Review Commission. That decision could then be expedited to council. Isn't that the case, John? If for whatever reason, those people that are against it don't like the decision made at Development Review Commission hearing as well?
Yeah, you're close. If it's an administrative review by staff and smaller, they can approve it and you move on. If it's minor or major development that a builder or developer would have to go through, then it goes through the DRC. And if the DRC says yes or no, then the builder, developer and/or the neighborhood can appeal it to us. And if we do that, then we get away from the policy and the legislative stuff and then we get into quasi-judicial. And that's where we have to just look at the facts of the case. And sometimes we override the DRC, sometimes, a lot of times we don't. But it's a track for developers to appeal if they feel that they should be heard more or that they were treated unfairly, or a neighborhood group can appeal it.
Right. And I think that's important for people to kind of, just understand the progression of how that works because I've been through that progression a few times, but it's, it's one that, it's spirited, we'll say that. And I'm sure those, those meetings are probably filled with more fireworks than most for you guys. So there's a few topics as of late that, you know, are probably, we'll call it spirited as well in terms of the debate, people on both sides. One in particular that we'll, we'll talk about here in a few. But is there anything that you guys are working on right now or have worked on besides the demo tax? Because I'm gonna hold that for a second, that, you know, have been, I guess, challenging for you guys as a council. You've had to kind of weigh, like Steve said, both sides of the coin. And, you know, really you can't make everybody happy, but you're trying to do the best you can for the city.
Well, we're trying to get our arms around the whole affordable housing thing, as you are and others are. It's just how can we make that work in our city? And unfortunately, Lake Oswego's got a, you know, reputation with some, or perception with some that we're just this big wealthy city with everybody with $5 million houses on the lake, and that's not the case. And when I campaigned in 2016, I was going up and down the stairs of a lot of, you know, wooden structures that were built 30 years ago in Mountain Park. We have multifamily and affordable housing here, but we need to do more. And obviously, you know, you don't want to interfere in a market or a builder, developer, you know, skill and experience. But we've done some things here that have now teed it up to do more affordable housing. So for example, we cleaned up the accessory dwelling unit that was a little overregulated and we were requiring $25,000 SDC on a small 800 unit, or 800 square foot unit behind a house. So you got rid of the SDCs, we clean up the regulations, you're not required to put asphalt parking spaces in. We increased it to 1,000 square feet if it was a remodel of a house into an ADU as part of it. We are working with the state to get the tax deferral going if a multifamily project comes in that's affordable. We're going to drop the SDCs if it's affordable. And one of the things I also been looking at is how can we be leaders to facilitate a development? Sometimes we just need to get the property owner and the builder developer together to do it. And we've been looking at a couple of sites to say, hey, this might be a good opportunity for some more missing middle housing, which we are missing. We had a quick statistic I'll give you, about 1,100 homes in Lake Oswego that have single seniors in them, whether they were single, divorced, widowed, that I'm sure not all of them want to age in place when they gotta deal with maintenance and repair. So where can we get those folks moved into and open those houses up for younger families for the schools? And then some of these other peripheral things like HP 2001, our demolition tax and other things. Housing has been a challenge, but we're getting there. And some people don't think we're working on it, but we've done some good progress in the last couple of years.
Yeah, I would say housing is probably the, well, that and the pedestrian bridge, that was a hot topic, too.
And I could give you an earful on that.
Well, let's hear, but let's dive into that first, then we'll go into demo tax. Because that one, it appears that that one is laying dormant at this point. Is that a good take on it or is that not the case?
Well, we think we put it, put it to rest, but there's still some that refuse to want to listen to the city. You know, I listened to it, I looked at it, I researched it. One of the staff came over and presented to our transportation advisory board. And I just said, hey, I don't think there's a shred of feasibility here to go on and spend any more money. Metro has $500,000 sitting there for more study of this bridge, which makes no sense.
Where was it gonna be, guys? I don't know anything about this.
Oh, that's, it's called the Oglo Bridge and it was from Oak Grove, their little park over there, which serves like 50,000 to our foothills park.
Across the river. Gotcha.
And I'm all for bike routes and connections and trails, things that you guys in the, in the commercial or in residential world would say, hey, it's part of a great community, so we can sell good property. But when it's done right, the three things we were against it was, one, it was going to be low usage. Very few people, not many are going to use it to go to work as our work and our jobs are way west of, on the west side of the city. Two, the price was estimated at 30 to 50 million to build this bridge, which means 50 to 100 because we know how public projects go. And then the big one was that it has to be the same size as the Sellwood and the Tillicum Bridge, 80 feet in the air. And that would be dropping 100 to 200 foot long ramps into our parks and chopping them up. So we said, no, we don't want that. We don't think it's going to be well-used. When some of the folks were, you know, concerned about sustainability, hey, if we work on some of the traffic congestion around here and fix some of our own bike routes, it would be much better for sustainability. And we have five bridges that are unfunded in the city. And if there was an earthquake for them, how do our, you know, first responders get to us? So we have a lot of other needs and funding. We just thought it was a waste of money. So we voted to no on proceeding at all.
And I have to say, I tend to agree with that. I just don't see the benefit. I don't see the benefit outweighing the cost and everything else that goes into it, at least at this time. But that was a very spirited debate, that's for sure, as it always is.
Were the, were the yayers mostly the east side people, John? I mean, was the push, when you say spirited, Tucker, that means somebody's for it and somebody's against it. Were most of the people for it from the Milwaukee side?
Well, it was very interesting. A lot of Oak Grove residents were against it because it would have chopped up Courtney Street and their own little park. They have more population unincorporated there than we do in Lake Oswego. We're like almost 40,000, they're like 50 or 60,000. That one little park on the river that big ramps would have dropped in there, Courtney would have been kind of blown up with the ramps. And they were saying, no. When we first were told about this, we thought it was a cute little stone bridge over the river for pedestrians and bikes only. And then we found out it was going to be 80 feet in the air. We, they said, no. It was people outside Milwaukee, I mean, Oak Grove and outside Lake Oswego that seemed to be pushing it without thinking about what this does to our communities.
Gotcha.
And that's where I just, I'm just amazed that they keep pushing it and why? For someone's agenda to just say, I got a bridge over the river. A bridge over the river would be great if we had a great spot for it. And there were some people that were for it that were saying how difficult it is to get up Route 43. There's no trail there and there's a ramp that comes off Sellwood. If we had a 43 corridor study and plan done, we could link all kinds of stuff quicker to get to Portland. And that's where it is. So we're hoping that cooler heads will prevail.
John, are you, are you involved in the, the big push by some to make Lake Oswego more public usage? Is that something that falls under your, your umbrella as well?
You mean the lake itself?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'm not for that. We obviously, as a city that's party to the whole, you know, legal battle that's going on to try and open it up, we're just waiting to see what the next appeal court decision will be. But right now, there's no official word that we have to do any one thing. The lake has been, you know, done by the lake corp for so long and built so much infrastructure, put so much time and money into it. I just can't see changing that right now.
Yeah, no, no, and I get that. Do you, and do you think there's any, any legs to that, that that would ever happen? Or is it hard to know at any point?
I don't think. And if there was a change where they said it's going to be a public domain or whatever, there's not many places to access. And we're so concerned about water quality here that there would be a really rigorous discussion on how anybody should be on the lake if they're not part of the lake already and taking care of their boats and their boards and things before they get into the water.
Yeah.
So that, that one, is it a public domain sort of thing? And then two is what is the access all about? That's when they first came after us on access.
So in other words, if they were to make it public, they'd say, okay, we'll let you go swimming on it, but we're going to pressure wash you first with, you know, 500 horsepower hose. Have fun.
Well, if they were swimming in other bodies of water, we may have to do that.
That'd keep them, that'd make them think twice before they swim.
May not be so appealing, right? Okay, well, do we, do we need to open another tab, John? Or do you think the computer's gonna keep running?
Let's just keep running. If it does, we can break it up.
All right. Well, I really want to dive into something that, you know, I've been following strongly. And I know that, again, this was a, it kind of came up pretty quick. I don't know. I know it was when you guys had the hearing about it, there was definitely a lot of conversation on both sides. But what I want to talk about is the demo tax, which has also made a lot of headlines kind of across the nation as well and various, you know, news outlets and whatnot. But maybe you can explain to our listeners what it is exactly, how it applies, and then we can kind of get into the nitty-gritty on exactly why it is that you guys felt that it was a good decision to implement it.
Well, as you Lake Oswego know, we have just approved, we collectively have approved the $30 million bond to catch up on all kinds of things that need to be done here in the city, a park and rec center, a pool, fields, gyms, adult center renovation, et cetera, et cetera. And it kept the same slot of an old bond, so it wasn't an increase. But everybody's got bond fatigue in this region. So we were very careful about that. We're trying to program all those funds. And one of the things we can use is SDC funds for some projects, but SDCs, according to state law, can only be used to build new capacity. So SDC system development charges are impact fees, which all across the country have been used for years. The planning world, they've been, you know, studied and researched and used for years. And there's got to be, you know, a chance to help your community grow and build. But when they're limited to new capacity, that means we can use them for an addition to a park or a new trail, but not our existing system. So here we are, almost 40,000 people, almost built out, not a lot of big lands to develop. And we can't use those funds to quote-unquote maintain what we have. And we have a lot of parks. We're blessed with a lot of beautiful parks. So the SDCs are balanced and used every year to try and do different projects, whether it's sewer water, you know, roads or parks. And we felt that we needed some more funds in the park group to help maintain what we have. Fixing a backstop, fixing a field, putting in, fixing a trail that's deteriorated, upgrading some, some play areas for kids. So we realized that would be a supplement to the bond. And the idea was to use this as a tax on existing houses that would be torn down, a demolition tax. So the number was 25 or 30 at one time. We got it down to 15,000. And the idea would be that this house, whatever condition it is, whoever owns it, has nothing contributing to any of the park systems, unlike a vacant lot, and I'll get to that in a minute. And that the $15,000 fee that would be paid by either the owner, the builder or negotiated, would then go into this fund to help us continue providing high-quality parks. If you look at a very basic scenario, a vacant lot next to a lot with a house on it, the vacant lot could get up to $37,000 or $40,000 worth of SDCs on it, including all the other SDC. But the house next door with the, I mean, the lot next door with the house would have nothing. So we thought 15,000 was reasonable. Some of the initial discussion, back to the affordable housing discussion, was to try and discourage tear downs. But as Portland and other cities around the country have found that that tax, even if it's a little bit higher, doesn't really discourage people. A lot of these homes have lived their life and they're inefficient or obsolete. We'd like to save some, but some are going to have to go. So the theory was if they never paid into it, an SDC or whatever, 15,000 would be put into the, you know, the maintenance fund for the parks. And that has, you know, some consternation. We've got great response back from people saying, yeah, we gotta keep these parks going for quality of life. And some saying, wait a minute, this is really not good for the, you know, the development world. So that's, that's where we're at. $15,000 demolition tax on any house torn down. If it's a remodel, no. If you deconstruct the house, rather than just backhoe it and tear it out and put it in the dumpster, you can get a $5,000 credit if you want to do the deconstruction. So that's, that's done.
What, just out of curiosity, I mean, on a, on a personal level, because we do both. And, you know, just a little history on like our demolition of houses in Lake Oswego. I mean, back when, post the real estate apocalypse, we'll call it, right? You know, we were one of the first companies to kind of come back and start doing infill new construction in Lake Oswego. And man, we took a lot of heat for tearing down anything. And everything we tore down was, as you said, past its useful life. But I was public enemy number one on the Lake Oswego Historic Society's Facebook page for a better part of a year with just blasting me for what we were doing. And, but now we kind of balance the two. I mean, we've got a project right now in first edition where we didn't tear it down. But it was because of the, the bones of the house and the footprint of the house allowed us to basically rebuild what was there, where a lot of times the houses, they just have these small footprints. They were built very poorly to begin with. There's just not much you can do with them. And so you do have to tear them down. But for those types of houses now, I mean, do you believe that this tax, where do you believe it shakes out in the market? Does it shake out in builders' margins slimmer? Does it shake out in higher price point on the other end? Or does it shake out in lower value of those types of properties that are ultimately destined for teardown?
Well, we were very cognizant of that. And also, you know, we, we're not really wanting to pile any more SDCs on than we have to because we want to make sure, try and get some affordability out of new homes. And new homes are needed. We want the city to grow and rebuild. So we pushed it down to 15. And we didn't think $15,000 was going to be that big a differential because of the overall price of land and the price of construction. And that in the long run, it would be negotiated out, you know, you're going to sell that lot with that old house on it. The house is probably going to go. You see listings that have that, hey, it's a tear down and build new. Whether it's coming half and half from builder or owner, it would be negotiated. It's like in first edition where some of the homes, you know, some of those properties are 450 to 6 and they're going to be a tear down.
Yep.
So we felt it fit into that. And, you know, again, they're not paying the full SDC that the vacant lot next door would pay at, you know, 37 to 40. Another quick side note on the SDCs, just quickly, a couple of years ago, we were approached by staff about updating the transportation SDC. Now, when you pay it, you're paying the whole range of all of them, but this was the line item for transportation. And they wanted to follow a national formula and catch up with cost of living, et cetera. Okay, fine. So we started using the ITI Urban Land Institute formula for land use, you know, per cars, per land use and how much is generated. Well, then we finally got close to the goal line and we were seeing all the land uses. You know, a coffee shop would have been paying $130,000 in SDCs because they attract traffic. There was no accounting if they were in an area to do multiple trips. So if you're in downtown Lake Oswego, you'd be hit with that even though you could park once and go to five or six different things. So that was a battle and we got that capped. I pushed to go, yes, let's approve the new formula, but cap it at 30%. I had a business owner, small business owner call and she said, hey, I'm probably going to pay about 28,000 for this new facility, a new building. But if this goes in effect tomorrow, or whatever the vote was, it's 130,000 for me. And we just could not see that. So we're trying to keep the SDCs under control. And I think the 15,000 in our minds weren't going to really hurt anybody in the long run.
Yeah, the, the transportation line item, I mean, I remember last year, I think it jumped, single-family new, new construction permits, about $8,000. I think it was like maybe July of last year or something like that.
Yeah.
When they caught it up. So that was, it went from like, well, if 40 something to 50 something thousand for basically a new, a newly created lot that didn't have SDC credits, right, for the old house being there. But the other thing too, I mean, you do make a good point that, you know, if it was a new lot, you know, they're paying SDCs. If it's an existing lot with an existing house, they're not. The challenge for us as builders, obviously, is then we have the cost of removing the existing home, right, which oftentimes has asbestos remediation, other things that, you know, there's another $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 right there on top of a demo cost of, you know, anywhere between 12 and 18 grand, let's say, on average, depending on the size of the house and, you know, how much concrete and all that is there. So there are additional costs there. I think that by having this 15,000, it, we were still a little ahead of the game. If we tore down existing homes, then if we had a newly created lot in terms of permit costs overall, I think with that 15 grand, it probably puts them about neck and neck. It's probably about the same cost of development overall. Is that kind of how you guys penciled it?
No, because we've been getting demolition all over the map. And again, we're not trying to say one is better than the other, but we, we understood. You gotta demolish the house and you can't just do it with a bucket in one day. There's stuff that has to be dealt with, especially if there's, you know, bad tiles and linoleum carpet and walls and whatnot, asbestos. We were sensitive to that. And again, we just didn't want to go way up to a full SDC, even if you say some of the demo charges would add on and say it's close. We did consider all that. And then there was some suggestions by some about, well, why don't you do a construction excise tax? Well, we nixed that idea about a year or so ago and we were looking at options and tools for affordable housing. Because again, whether it's on the house or the vacant lot or the builder, it's just adding more to the cost of housing. There are others that said, why don't you do some sort of a broad tax across the whole city? We are taxed out, we have bond fatigue, we have a big school coming up next year. So we said, no, that didn't make any sense. And for us to make the nexus to fix the parks, it's part of the cost of living, our quality of living and services that we provide. So hopefully it'd be good neighborhood for the builder to put a house in that's got good parks and things.
Yeah, for sure. So the other thing, what was I gonna say? Well, either way, I get what you're saying. So ultimately then, because this was the rationale in a lot of people's heads was, well, this is to fight House Bill 2001, right? And ultimately what's coming down the pipe with that. What you're saying and what kind of the united stance of the council, I'm assuming also, is that it really has nothing to do with that. This is more about just funding new parks or maintenance type stuff to parks as opposed to new infrastructure and things like that that you're required to funnel those SDC dollars to right now.
Right. And I think this is a great question because some people said, oh, they did it to fight HB 2001, House Bill 2001. And I think the Wall Street Journal got it wrong. Counselor O'Neill had been quoted in there as saying, here's the reality of land prices and house prices. I think the reporter, the researcher was trying to get us, oh, they're doing $15,000 demo tax to fight 2001, had nothing to do with that. We opposed 2001 from the beginning. We supported the League of Oregon Cities to fight the legislature on it. Unfortunately, it passed. We had a huge study session. We had a huge study session the other night about it. It's got all kinds of weird implications. As a city councillor, I did not like the idea that it's inserting, uh, home rule, uh, that cities can run their own cities that are bigger, that they know what to do on the street rather than the legislature. And also as a city planner, I'm just shocked and appalled that they would be taking shots at the character of single family neighborhoods. There was a little bit of a buzz. I was hearing that, oh, you know, the single family neighborhoods are all for the wealthy. That's not the case. In Chicago, I grew up in a bungalow neighborhood that, uh, was small and clean and wonderful, but not a super wealthy neighborhood. So I think too much labeling and blanketing of, uh, uh, they're getting away with something. You know, people voted with their feet to buy into these single family neighborhoods and are very proud of them. We not only are proud of them, but we campaigned to preserve them. And since I've been on for the last few years, we downzoned the Uplands neighborhood, we downzoned Forest Highlands and we got control of the flag lots. That's not anti-development. It's just being sensible with the character of the neighborhood. So two thousand one as a whole, a can of worms. It was so confusing the other night when our planning director presented it. Because nothing's defined. They're not looking at impacts. They're not looking at even fitting within bulk standards. And, uh, and then also the cost, we hear now that some of the legislators are saying, well, it's really not an affordable housing bill. It's a density bill, which makes no sense. And, uh, you know, a developer that would squeeze another unit in or a builder, it's not going to be an affordable housing with the costs around here. So, yeah, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. It's nothing to do with HB two thousand one to do the demo pack.
Gotcha. And on that front then, because that's a, I mean, that's a big thing to unpack for you guys as council. Um, you know, what is on the agenda in terms, are you just trying to figure out what in the hell is in this thing first? And then figure out how it could apply, um, moving forward and how you guys will kind of either tweak planning or not?
Well, our, our, yes, exactly right. Our, our staff, our planning staff is really good and they have been bird dogging this, going to all the meetings and trying to interpret it. They're very savvy to the technicalities of planning. And they're trying to get their mind on it. They gave us a couple of options about trying to redo the comp plan and the zoning ordinance right now, which, uh, we kind of slowed down and said, well, let's get more of a checklist of issues we have to get ahead of it. When the, uh, Department of, uh, Land Conservation Development gets their model ordinance ready for us. We're not sure what's going to come out of the wash on that. And we're just hoping that they're listening to the cities, forgetting whether it's Lake Oswego and the bad perception that it's all wealthy, which is wrong. But just listening to the cities and what this does to neighborhoods. And, uh, for example, they even talked about targeting an area. We initially thought it was going to be all single family homes. And then they talked about, well, you can designate an area. And I go, now how politically can we go and pick one neighborhood versus others? And say, you're going to be the target of increased density when you don't want it. And, uh, and then if your infrastructure doesn't fit for increased density, they're saying, okay, you can get an exemption, but a year later you got to get that fixed. You'd have to do all your sewer and water and roads and stuff over again. And so it's, it's, I think the way we left it was we thanked staff for the bird dogging. They're going to keep looking at it. And we're going to just try and get ahead of it with issues that we run into. In Chicago, before I moved here about fifteen years ago, they downzoned several huge neighborhood areas. Because the streets and the sewer and water and the alleys could not handle three, four, five and six flats. It just couldn't do it. It wasn't anything political. And, uh, they were getting more, uh, complaints and concerns and issues with neighbors because they were overloading these blocks. And Portland's been doing some of that and we don't want to see that in our city.
Yeah. And I know there's a lot of, um, I mean, a lot of that infrastructure is old, right? I mean, it just can't take, uh, the added number of units that this could create in any given neighborhood. Um, but man, it, it sounds like a mess. And I know like, for example, and I'm sure you've, you know, talked to maybe some of the councillors, uh, or read the, the headlines. But like the city of West Lynn, right? They're, they're thinking about maybe locking horns with the state versus, you know, trying to zig instead of zag. Um, you know, has, has that, uh, conversation kind of filtered over to you guys as well to maybe support that effort? Or are you just kind of looking around and taking inventory of what everybody's doing at this point?
Well, that's another great question. We actually brought that up. Is there ways we can actually help defeat this and change it in a more positive way? And I'll get to that in a minute about positive ways. But, uh, there was discussion that probably right now, we, we need to let this vet invent from the state, which are putting the new rules together. And then make sure that we have a strong voice that they're listening to us and not just running over us a, a rough shot. Um, that's why I think at the end of the day, we want to get ahead by giving them the issues, whether it's neighborhood design, neighborhood character, accessibility, infrastructure. Uh, the, you know, the, the, the ability for people to pick a neighborhood because they like the character, not worried that it's going to be chopped up the next day with, oh, density that doesn't fit. So we're not necessarily saying the West Lynn thing, but we're asking the same questions. Um, I think when sense and sensibility comes into it, which is a lot of how I vote, is, uh, what is this really doing to our city? Uh, I was hoping that the, the, the goal of affordable housing is fine. And now I hear that's not the goal. It's density, which doesn't make any sense if it's not affordable. Um, uh, I was hoping the legislation would help cities facilitate the development of housing along our big, long, overgrown commercial corridors. And I've seen that all over the country in my work where you go miles of commercial that's not all thriving. And you've got some really great potential to bring in all kinds of housing into those pockets along these roads, especially ones like McLaughlin, we're working on with the city of the County's Economic Development Commission. There's like forty used car lots on that street, on that road. And can you imagine if that was redeveloped with some office, mixed use, apartments, condos, townhomes? What that would do for housing and just that corridor alone. Uh, and the same thing with ours. We've got some zoning that maybe not allow the housing. Well, let's facilitate that and let some of that mix in, not, not get rid of our commercial, but supplement it, you know?
Yeah. I mean, one big area that both Steve and I are, you know, a part of, um, because I live, uh, you know, in the Uplands neighborhood, but, uh, the Boones Ferry project. I mean, that, there was more dormant commercial along Boones Ferry or underutilized, um, than you could probably count for a while there. But now it's in the middle of a, a giant facelift and there's, you know, a fair bit of commercial that'll probably continue to facelift after this project's done on the city side.
Yeah. And, and that's going to be, you're right on. It's going to be a whole new street. It'll look as best we can with four lanes, like a main street. It'll be a better front door and gateway into the city. And we need to market that whole corridor as one corridor. And some of the zoning and planning got a little too complicated and were discouraging development. And as you've said, there's not a lot of new stuff. And ideally, if we can consolidate some of those lots, get them incorporated in the city and then allow housing to fit in either over the stores or freestanding. Uh, it, it could be good for everybody, including living there while you're working there. One of the issues we have there, just as a sidetrack, is transit throughout the city, but especially on Boones. We don't have regular dependable, official transit bus routes that are serving our workers. And we have twelve thousand jobs in Lake Oswego and people are coming on two hour trips to get here. And we can't depend on it. And when I was chair of the planning commission, we had TriMet's planners come in. And they presented a new plan for Lake Oswego to reorient the whole thing. Breakup underperforming routes, add new, connect further out east and west so people can come in. And the first question was, wow, this was a great plan. When are we going to get it done? And they said, we don't have any money. So instead of bridges over the river, let's fund some real bus help in the city.
Awesome.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good point. It's just really out, you know, let's allocate the resources that make the biggest impact, right? And kind of can help push the city forward.
Hey, John, I, I was going to jump in here real quick and just make a couple of comments. Um, first of all, thank you so, for being so generous with your time and, and I honestly am proud to have you representing our city. You, you have just such a great, um, common sense approach to it, to everything you talk about. Um, one thing that I really appreciated, and honestly, this isn't something I understood before you explained it on here, was that this demo tax, it's not punitive in any way. It's not intended to be a deterrent to, to tearing down homes. It's just a make sense, hey, we, these homes that are being constructed and making money for multiple parties, including the builders. And that's okay. They, they deserve to make money. Um, they're not contributing in any way to the system development charges that, that other properties are. Gosh, that, that, that just absolutely makes sense. You know, I, I heard kind of your take on it, Tucker, where you said, um, you know, well, we have other costs, which I get, um, in tearing down the house and, you know, that, that impacts us. Um, the one, the one, um, counter punch I would say to that is in general, I would venture, and you can correct me if you're wrong, if I'm wrong. Most teardown properties are probably a better and more valuable lot than a vacant property. Hence why a house was put there many, many years ago and why there isn't one on the vacant property. Would you agree with that?
Um, it's, it's not so cut and dry. Um, most of the, the newer lots are being partitioned off, right? So they would be bigger lots that are being partitioned. The challenge then becomes, because we, we're completing one on Washington Court right now. And I would say that the lot that was created is as good as any lot that's existing, um, on the street there. But they're usually heavily wooded. And so with that heavily wooded lot then comes not only a fair bit of pushback, um, you know, on a planning level, but then also on a neighborhood association level for any trees that have to be cut for the new house that's going to go in there. And so there's a lot of brain damage there on our side, um, you know, just dealing with a lot of spirited conversations slash very angry conversations, right? Um, for trees that have to be cut down. A lot of people seem to forget that their house once probably had trees where it sat as well. So, you know, that becomes a challenge, but then there's the cost associated with that as well. So, you know, trees are not cheap to cut, especially some of these older ones, um, that are a little bit bigger. So it's, I wouldn't say they're better. Um, you know, obviously your road frontage lots are going to be, in my opinion, your most valuable lots as you get into flag lots. I would say there's a, a smaller percentage of the public that likes flag lots as much as they like road frontage lots. So they're not quite as good if you were going to rank them on a scale of one to 10. Um, but we've, you know, we've developed a number of lots that are newly created that I would say are as good as any existing lot.
Mm-hmm. Awesome.
I would, I would, I would add that, uh, you know, you're right about, you know, people built something there years ago and, and we don't have that many vacant lots. And we do have some that could be split up either into flag lots or a, a little mini subdivision. At the end of the day, I'm also big on what's the physical realm, the urban realm, the, you know, the urban design of what's left. We have really good neighborhoods, whether they're lower priced or higher priced. We're not just chopping them up. And I've seen too many times that it's just chop it out on little tiny streets that aren't going to handle the parking and whatnot. The flag lots hit ahead because those flag lanes are private. Parking's non-existent. Bringing your garbage out in there is non-existent. If you're going to stop and drop your groceries off, you're blocking others. And it just got out of control and became like California where they were just zipping stuff in behind each other. You know, the fronts looking at the back, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, with better planning, some of these subdivisions could have been a true subdivision rather than just chopped up lots. So trying to get control of the actual look and feel of the neighborhood. So what's left is, is a good thing, especially if it's a builder coming in to create a neighborhood. And it's not just the same old, same old. Um, as far as the trees, uh, you know, if I can hit that for a minute. We're at a crossroads with the trees in Lake Oswego. So we have a tree code that got reformed a couple of years ago. They clean things up. They define things. Uh, they tell you what the price is and the size of the tree. But they never dealt with the development code. And the last word from the tree committee chair was, we need to look at the development code. So right now, a builder can come in on one lot and clear cut the whole thing with no questions hardly asked. And then apply for permits for all those through the tree code. The neighbor next door can get a couple out per year and they got to go through the hoops and pay the permit. But the one lot can be completely cleared. On the other side of the equa- uh, equation, we're getting people saying, you got to preserve all the trees. Well, you got to get a house in there. You got to get a footprint in there. And so we, uh, hit the head on a project up on Toma Road where, uh, the developer's going to clear it all out. Staff said they were handcuffed. They didn't have the tools to really adjust things. We found out that they could have asked for variance, but the developer or the builder didn't want to go and do, you know, another extra month or something with the DRC. It got appealed anyway. So I think they spent more time on the appeal than if they would have asked for a variance. We got it, appealed us. And I made a motion to approve it, but that they save, uh, tree thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen at the south end of the site. Well, that made sense. They should have approved, uh, you know, tried to preserve those to begin with. They were going to cut a drain line off a gutter to come through a thirty-five inch dug fur to get over to the rain garden. They could have moved that up. Long story short, a month later, after it was approved, the trees are coming down. People are yelling and screaming. Uh, staff confirmed that, yes, they're preserving those four, five trees. And I said, why couldn't we have done this in the beginning? Save the builder, the neighborhood, the DRC and the city council time going through each, every tree. When I got out of the hall, out into the hall after the meeting that we approved that, someone said to me, well, why didn't you approve saving seven, eight and nine? Which is right in the middle of the building. And I said, can't be done. You got to have the house footprint there. You can't say, we want them all done because then you're going to be anti-development and that's not the case. We have to have the happy medium here. So I'm hoping in the next couple of months, we can get it so we can be better on preserving the good trees. And then not having the developer pulled down on every single tree. So.
Yeah, it's, it's challenging, Steve. It really is. And, you know, I, I think you make some, some great points there, John. We, you know, we, on a density side, you know, Steve is very familiar with the project that we did in Upper Drive across from a listing that he had at one point, where it was, uh, basically an acre. Um, we split it. It could have been platted into three new lots. We did it as two. And we actually sold them at higher price point and they were half acre lots and they sold really quickly. They were, you know, high demand product. So I'm not an advocate of ju- density over everything. I think, you know, as you mentioned, there's certain fabric of these neighborhoods that it needs to, you know, projects need to fit within. And we really pride ourselves on trying to make housing that fits within the neighborhoods that we do work in. Um, and that was one case of that. There's another builder that down the street, they shoehorned three in. They had more trouble selling them. And quite honestly, I don't like the development at all because of that. But, uh, on a tree side, you know, just a, a, a real example, you know, we're, we're doing this project up Washington Court. And we had to clear out, I mean, it was heavily dense, uh, as far as trees go. So we had to clear a lot of trees just by nature of how many trees were on the lot, just for the footprint of the house. But it was flag lot, uh, the, the lots of flag lot that's got, you know, the thirty foot wide access to get back there. Um, but, you know, within the, um, driveway area, there was a tree that sat right in the middle of basically where we needed a hammerhead. So people could turn around so they didn't have to back out all the way down that thirty foot access lane, right? And so, uh, eventually, you know, planning agreed with us and we ended up taking out this tree. But we had a lot of pushback from people that were like, we don't care. We want you to leave the tree. And it's like, well, on a marketability perspective, on a usability perspective, like nobody wants a tree right in the middle of their driveway. And so ultimately we ended up getting it cut down. But there's just, there's a lot of, I think that there's a make sense tree code where, like you said, if you can preserve those trees that you mentioned, uh, on that hearing and you can do a few small things to do it. It, that totally makes sense. But then there's people on the other side that, you know, they're just not looking through it with a, a realistic lens in terms of trying to add housing, trying to make that housing as desirable as possible, but also keeping as many trees as possible at the same time.
Well, that's the happy medium. You're hitting it right on is, you know, we, we can't save them all and we can't vilify the builders. And some builders, not all, the good ones are watching the trees because they do add value. Just need to be more upfront and say, let's try and work it out a little bit. If you need a variance, come and ask for it. I think for a tree, you'd get it pretty quick. And I've seen some where, you know, hey, the foundation is going to chop the root system up. The tree's got to go. And I've seen some like, why do you need to tear them out off the back of the yard that nothing's going to be near? Just be sensible. And I think if we're going to reform this in the next couple of months and the Development Review Commission is starting to look at it too, because they're getting, you know, perplexed by the complexity of how this one tree here and one tree there issue keeps coming up. I, I think we need to have it so it's, what do we need to do? Is there some tools, maybe some incentives? But also to educate others that trees are going to need to come out in some location. The happy medium between all, you know?
Yeah, I think that's a, a good way to put it, especially the problem right now is that, you know, you have to put up the notice signs, right? And as soon as you put the notice signs up, you might as well put the builders up on a cross and people start throwing stones at them. Because I mean, I, and I tell you what, I, I get so many, uh, stink eyes and, and dirty things said to me otherwise from people that are just adamantly opposed. Doesn't matter where they are, what they are, they're just opposed to it. And I, and I do think that that mentality has to change there. There definitely needs to be, you know, uh, preserving certain trees on a lot if possible. But man, people got to get their head right that some trees without question have to come out, not all, but some do when you're doing new development, especially on these lots, Steve, like we mentioned, that are newly created lots that didn't have a house or a footprint there previously.
Mm-hmm.
Our, our DRC commissioners, real quick, and our, our DRC commissioners, our planning commissioners, our city council, very well versed on trees. We are a tree city. Uh, we have a big canopy. There's nobody that doesn't understand all the benefits of the trees. It's just getting us the next step to try and get these tools for staff and the builders to say, okay, we don't need to fight on every single, you know, property. It just doesn't make any sense. So we got to loosen staff's, uh, uh, reins a little bit on that.
Hey, John, I want to change gears on you real quick because I want to, I re- I genuinely am curious about a subject. And that is the, um, homeless problem. And in the case of Lake Oswego, the non-problem. Um, I was just in Seattle over the weekend for a long weekend and I am convinced I saw far, far, far less homeless people there than I did in Portland. Remember I said at the beginning of this podcast, I, I left Lake Oswego for about three years, lived downtown in the Coin Tower, um, right in the heart of the city. And, um, while I was there, one of the upper penthouse units, it was a, it was a triple unit, sold for about three million dollars, right? So this is, this is a nice, obviously there's nice housing in that area. But there would be homeless people just on a day in, day out basis, the same people in the same, you know, in the same entryways of businesses. What is it that Lake Oswego has done that doesn't allow for that? I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm curious. I mean, obviously these are conversations you guys have.
Well, I, I think that, uh, there's a bunch of things going on. One is we have a really excellent police force. I've worked with, uh, cities across the country, either for private sector into the cities or the cities themselves. And our suburban force is just amazing. And they are, they have said repeatedly from one chief to the new chief that, uh, they want to be the most reasonable person in the room. And they will work with folks to get them into the right locations and to write programs. Uh, as far as Portland, I think it, it kind of saddens me as a, as a resident of the region and as a planner that things have gotten so bad. Um, people can say, no, I'm walled off from Portland. I don't need to deal with Portland. But Portland is the heart of this region. And I just, uh, you know, the way it's being governed, I just can't believe it. When I came here and they were talking about the homeless camp, the long-term quote unquote homeless camp, which was supposed to be temporary in Chinatown. And that somebody found a new solution, but it was to put people underneath the I-five bridge under a viaduct. I was stunned. I thought this was a, a region that was a lot more advanced, uh, than that. Uh, the idea of the Wapato jail being poo-pooed by the county board of Multnomah County when they had a Uh, the idea of the Wapato jail being poo-pooed by the county board of Multnomah County when they had a ready set facility that could have handled lots of folks, medical facilities, recreation facilities, parking and being near jobs for those that could be trained for jobs. One of the, uh, complaints was that, oh, the social services are downtown, so people have to go back and forth. Maybe you should bring the social services out there and make a campus, a social service campus. And then folks could transition into other areas from there. Um, I am worried about Portland for three reasons. One is I'm hearing more and more suburbanites not going to downtown or to the overall city for restaurants and things because of the homeless problem. Uh, two, the tourists and visitors that are coming are now getting a good dose of what's going on. Uh, we had some folks here in, uh, town that came and, and we're sitting at our ice cream shop. And I said, you know, what are you doing here? They're visiting, they're world travelers, so to speak. And I said, oh, you're going to go to 23rd Street and, and are you going to go to the Pearl? Oh, no, we've been seeing what's going on and our friend says, don't go. 23rd Street's great, Pearl's great. But now here's the tourists and visitors getting, uh, this kind of dose. And the last but not least is our businesses. Folks that have businesses and buildings in downtown Portland that say, don't come down anymore. I, I, I just can't take it. Um, we were going to go down to an advisor, uh, for some consultation and they said, don't come to us, we'll come to you because people are doing their business in their front entrance, up and down all the ramps and stairs in the, uh, parking lots. It's out of control and I still can't believe that it goes on like it is, including the camping along trails and things where kids are walking and dogs are walking and, uh, needles and things. So something has to be done on a much better scale than it's being done. We just watch it. We've had a couple of, uh, uh, situations, our police are on it, uh, they're compassionate and they, they make it work.
Uh, can I, can I dig a little deeper in that real quick, John? Cause I, I want to understand that. So if a homeless person, let's say somebody from Portland hitchhikes down or walks down from Portland and sets up a camp in Millennium Park, what do the police do? Do they say you need to leave? Do they put them in their car and take them out of the city? What do they do?
Well, you can't camp overnight in, in, in the parks.
Maybe no tent, maybe no tent, just they're sitting on a bench.
Well, sitting on a bench, you have to be careful because there's federal laws about rousting people off benches and things. It could be anybody just taking a break. So they're very sensitive to that issue. But then the longer term camping out somewhere, that's a different issue. And, and many cities have, you know, you got to be out of the parks by sundown or 10 o'clock, et cetera, et cetera. And, um, our guys are really trained with diversity, equity, inclusion. They're trained with almost like a social worker attitude. We have gift cards that they have if somebody needs a meal, they can give that if they need a bus ride. Uh, they know all the agencies they got to plug into. It's not like they're lost because their suburban cops are really on the game. And so if we find somebody in need, we try and reach out and figure out what, 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 what the need is, you know? We had someone, uh, call in, uh, in a neighborhood where they said someone was going through their garbage cans. Now, obviously they should have just called the non-emergency and our police officers would have been there. And so, uh, our police chief reached back to this person, said, please call non-emergency, but we'll be there and we will see if there's a need. Are they hungry? Are they homeless? Or is it that there's a criminal thing? So instead of assuming right away, there's a criminal thing, they had compassion for what to do. We had a, a, a young man that was development disabled, was at some function and, uh, they helped get him back home, uh, on a bus with some, you know, cards and things that they could help do. It, it's just, we don't have the scale that Portland does. And I really feel bad for Portland. You know, as the center of this region, we've got to have a strong heart of this region. And something's got to be done. I'm still amazed at the Wapato jail thing that they don't use that. It's just amazing.
Yeah. And, and I do agree with all three of your observations about what this will do to our region. To the point where I, um, and I don't know if this was one of your observations, it kind of plays into your observations, but I genuinely am concerned that people will stop moving here. We've, you know, our real estate has done well, our, our metropolis has done well, our region has done well. As we've seen an influx of people coming from California and, you know, beyond. And I, I wonder at what point is that going to crater in on itself as people come here and go, wow, this place is just a hot mess of rampant, you know, homelessness?
Well, and also if you just think about it, getting homeless for a minute, you think about safety and security, which is a basic of life in any city, country, continent. People want to be safe and secure. And if they are making decisions right away, well, I can't go there for dinner. Oh, I can't go there for business, I can't go there for visiting. And Portland's got a lot of cool stuff to see. I mean, involved in the county's economic development commission and tourism and that. And we have great stuff here for people to see, let alone come to live. And I think people, friends of mine from out of town are just amazed at what we have here. But when you find gray in what's going on, it's really hurting the city and I feel bad for them, I really do. And I just think there's got to be a bigger governance thing for the homeless. It's, it's, it's fine to deal with it one season, two seasons, but something's got to give. I still can't believe from a compassionate society that we allow people to sleep on sidewalks, cold sidewalks overnight. And, uh, and, and don't get involved to try and make it a bigger, better place, you know? Chicago for a while was looking at these social service campuses that they would bring all the services together and the housing. And then once they get oriented and transitioned and, and the social workers work with them, they either got pointed to the medical world or the mental health world or the, uh, uh, job world. And, uh, it was something that they said, why have this stuff scattered all over? You know, it, it's tough, really is.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a big problem. And I, and I'll agree with you, Steve. I was up in Seattle last Wednesday, uh, for a couple of real estate, uh, events that I spoke at and, um, it was nothing like Portland and I went all the way through and I kept looking and looking and, you know, I was, I was even talking to people up there. I was like, you know, your guys' homeless problem is not nearly as bad as Portland. Like, oh, you haven't seen it, you haven't seen it. It's like, no, I went through the whole city, you know, I, I saw it and, you know, I saw Portland on the way out too. And I saw them way back in and, uh, you know, even at my office here, you know, we've, we've had an office in John's Lanning here for 14 years. Um, even though we do most of our work in Lake Oswego and, you know, that right down where the, uh, overpass, the Corbett overpass is now, there's, you know, a big tent brigade that popped up there and that was untouched for a long time, but it just keeps moving this way. And it's a problem that has to be solved. And ultimately I just think we need some stronger leadership that's willing to not please everybody in order to solve this problem in some way, shape or form. And I just don't know that we have it right now, but hopefully that changes.
Well, and I just wonder too, if in the homeless world, we are known as the great place to go where nobody, you know, the city doesn't mess with you, there's services, I mean, and, you know, so it's, so it's kind of the opposite. And, you know, you, you're, now you're attracting, you know, that crowd while deterring, you know, the tourists and, and the people that might genuinely move here and, and add value to our community.
Well, I'll tell you one quick story and I don't want to take too much more John's time, but you know, the, the demo permit aside or a demo tax side and, and the cost of building Lake Oswego, I would way rather build in Lake Oswego than Portland right now, um, just on a personal level. And one of the quick reasons for that is that if we build in Portland, I am deathly afraid that we're going to have a homeless camp pop up in front of our new builds, right? And now we're trying to sell 800, $900,000 new construction or more where we have a homeless problem in front of it. And one of our, um, mutual friends, uh, who's a builder, he has a lot in North Portland and he had to fence the lot to keep the homeless off of it. The homeless then camped in front of the lot on the public right of way. And now they've been throwing their garbage onto the lot and the city of Portland is fining him for the garbage that they're throwing on the lot, but they will not remove the homeless people from in front of the lot while he's in permitting, trying to get everything squared away. Um, and it was, the last fine wasn't a cheap one, it was 625 bucks. Um, so, you know, there's a lot of challenges there that need to be cleaned up and it trickles down and it affects everybody.
And you're, you're hitting what others are saying the same thing. And that's another sad thing, if builders aren't wanting to go in there because of that, then it's, it's, it's going to be tougher and tougher. Uh, we were done, my wife and I were downtown, uh, Portland for a Saturday event, so special event on the river. Uh, we walked along the river, it was beautiful. Then we came back across the street on NATO. There was a viaduct, a bunch of guys sleeping under there, the urine smell was horrible. We had to go out in the middle of the street to cross and here comes the tourist. You could see they had the camera on their, uh, neck and a, a map and their child. And they had to go out in the middle of the street because it smelled so bad. And I go, oh my God, what, what is the outside world thinking now about this? And, uh, you lose the tourists, you lose the suburbanites and you lose the business. Then what do you, what do you got for your economic development, your tax base and job base, you know? So the other quick, if you want to, to touch on is Stafford.
Yeah, I'd love to hear your thoughts real quick because that, that's been a big conversation for years now.
Well, we came to town, uh, and that was one of the first entryways into Lake Oswego, you know, obviously Twelton, West Lynn area. And I thought, my God, what a beautiful green gateway with the hills and the fields, et cetera, and the rivers. Um, so I've been keeping an eye on this since I've been on the planning commission and I'm realizing that there has been no really serious official formal planning. Uh, different groups have done stuff, a lot of work has been done as far as infrastructure and whatnot. But, uh, never a formal, uh, vote. Uh, the hamlet came together with the owners a while back, a couple of years ago, and came up with a compromise plan that had some sensibility, but no official plan. Then I come to the region, I found out that the urban growth boundary has a lot of good facts and figures and pros to it, but that the whole planning and development aspect is fight it out in the courts or let the state senate do the grand bargain. So why are we not around the table, working together to do the plan? So we've, uh, worked hard. Uh, Jim Bernard, the chair of the, uh, uh, county board, Clackamas County Board pushed everybody to the table and said, we got to get out of the courts, we got to get this done. We signed a five-party agreement, county, metro and the three cities. And that was great, moved together, worked together, planned together. But then we went into a three-party agreement situation of quote unquote, put meat on the bones. And all of a sudden some arbitrary deadlines crept in there. Everything north of the Twelton River, you had to wait 10 years before you can do a formal concept plan and annex any land in. Everything south through the interchange, you had to wait till I-205 is teed up and that could be years before funding is, is, is appropriated. So I thought that was very arbitrary. I opposed it, I've been opposing it all along. I found out that the home builders opposed it. Uh, there's been, uh, lawsuits, there's one now pending about the whole three-party agreement. And all I've been saying is not pushing any one development angle at all. Get a good, comprehensive plan for that area. So everybody sees, uh, sings off the same song sheet. Uh, right now there's been some stick the head in the sand and push the, the, the problem down the road. We have traffic problems down there today. We have I-205 being designed without any input of what the land use said the I-205 interchange should be. Frog Pond, Wilsonville planters did a beautiful job on the plan for that. 2,000 some units are coming in. And when the hamlet people ask, well, what about those cars coming up through 205? They go, well, we don't know, talk to metro, talk to the county, talk to somebody. What we need is leadership to step up and do the plan and everybody at the table. That's my pitch.
And I agree with you. I mean, I, I, uh, grew up partly, um, in my adolescence in, uh, the lovely Aloha and then the other part in the, uh, Stafford area. Um, and I've seen it change quite a bit, um, you know, over that course of time. But you're right, traffic is horrendous, um, at this point with, uh, if you add, you know, those additional 20,000 or 2,000 units, excuse me, um, you know, on the Wilsonville side of it, I mean, it's 65th to Stafford, all that. I mean, it's, it's messy. So I, I agree, I think there needs to be a universal plan that, uh, everybody kind of bases all of their design and, and future plans off of. And, um, I'm hopeful, yeah, just like you, that, uh, that can happen. But it sounds like it's kind of a, a big gridlock and for lack of a better term, a shit show right now.
Right. And I, uh, I, I, I look at it as 4,000 acres, green gateway to three cities in the county. And we can't screw it up. And I looked at a project, uh, or I remember a project I worked on, it was 8,000 acres between Chicago and Milwaukee. And we got everybody around the table. The cities actually did tax base sharing, Ray Seen in the small town that, that, that worked on the plan. It was 8,000 acres that were planned and are moving forward together. Everybody knows what's going on. They plan and program the infrastructure, it's not all done overnight. And it's just, good planning will make good sense in that area, so.
Awesome. It's, it is such a great area, it is such a great area and there's such potential there.
Yeah.
Well, John, I got to say, this has been, uh, a great discussion. Um, I really appreciate your time, I know Steve does as well, and I'm sure our listeners are, uh, in the same boat for sure. But, uh, we really appreciate you taking the time to come on here today and, um, you know, allow you the platform to hopefully connect with a lot of people that, um, you know, are on our listeners and, uh, get to know you and, and kind of get to know your perspective on this stuff. And I, and I got to agree, you know, we may not fully agree on everything, but I think that, uh, we can agree to disagree calmly and collectively, um, on the stuff that we don't, which is the way that it should be, right? I think it's, it's a missing piece of society these days where just because you don't agree on something doesn't mean that you can't be cordial towards each other. And, um, so I appreciate that.
In the spirit of, of being, uh, the melting pot Americans that we are, we should be way more tolerant because we all have opinions instead of starting the hate machine the minute some, something comes up that you don't agree with. So I appreciate the show, I really do. Thank you guys and, uh, have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, John. We really appreciate it. It was one of my favorite, um, podcasts of the year. So thank you for putting a nice little bow on top of our year. Um, happy holidays to everyone.